Good evening. It's so good to see so many of you here, especially on a night that is rainy and not great outside. So, thank you for roughing the weather and being here. I just want to start by saying that our goal here in the third year of my town hall meetings is to make sure that you, as the community, understand the what and the why of what is happening in Carroll County Public Schools as it relates to the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. This is something, this is a law that passed through the state legislature in 2021, and we have been working since then to operationalize that legislation in our school system along with all of the other districts in Maryland. This is a complex law. It's not easy. It took a while for us to figure out what we would have to do, and it took a lot of planning with me and the 23 other superintendents in the state. We have been working nonstop on this since it passed in '21. And there are benefits, and then there are consequences to those benefits. What I want you to know is that tonight, we're going to share where we are in the implementation of Blueprint, but I don't want anyone to think that we're stopping here. I, along with my staff, are having meetings in Annapolis regularly with legislators, with the Accountability and Implementation Board, with those on the State Board of Education, and the Maryland State Department of Education. So, we, so our goal for them is to make sure that they understand not only the benefits, but the consequences to us implementing Blueprint as the law is written. Excuse me, I have pneumonia. And so, as we get into the presentation, I'm going to give things over to my two assistant superintendents to actually go through the slides, and then we will have a, and then we will have a question-answer time. Before I do that, I just want to recognize a few people in the room with us tonight. We have Commissioner Ed Rothstein. Where's Ed? There he is. We have Board President Tyra Bataglia. We have Board Member Dr. Pat Dorsey. And I just saw Kristin Zimmer, a board member, walk in over there. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. John O'Neill, the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, to get us started on distributing this information, giving the presentation tonight. And then I will see you back for questions and answers.
Thank you, Dr. McCabe. And good evening. Is that working in the back? Ted? All right. So, we want to take, we want to take a couple of minutes. You all have this PowerPoint, or you have the ability to receive it on the back table if you want. Also, when we post the link to the meeting for people to stream, we'll, we'll post the slides as well, so people can download it or print it at home if they'd like. We got, we have two very important processes happening at the same time. This is one. Blueprint compliance is one. The other one is the work to produce our operating budget for next year. And we want to take a couple of minutes, we've been doing this at all of our board meetings as well, to just explain that these two things are, they're distinct processes, but sometimes they're sort of colliding into each other at different times, and because they're going on at the same time, I think there's a little bit of extra confusion out there because of that, because of that timing or that coincidence. So, the operating budget is simply the money that we run the school system on from year to year. The revenue of the school system one year and the expenditures of the school system that same year. And a fiscal year for a school system is July 1 to June 30, so we're in the process of planning our fiscal year 2026, the next July 1 operating budget. And really, in the simplest terms, the operating budget is just what is the total amount of revenue we expect to get for next year, and what are our total projected expenditures, and are they in balance, or do we need to make adjustments to bring them into balance? And we have like maybe one more slide on that. At the same time, there's this concept of fiscal compliance under the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. And so, like, what is that? That is not about the operating budget change from year to year. That is about spending the money we have in any year, whether that money does go up next year, or even if it money went down next year. Just spending the revenue we have in a year the way that the Blueprint for Maryland Future Law requires us to do. And some of those requirements are a bit different than in the past, are much more, much more focused in terms of the requirements than in the past. And so, that is actually, even though that's not about more or less total money necessarily, it's a big dollar amount in terms of adjusting how we're spending money from school to school in our county school system. One last slide on the operating budget. So, this isn't the blueprint. This is just the overall budget. So, for next year's operating budget, we're projecting at this point in the, in the timeline, a new amount of $9.3 million in additional ongoing revenue for next July 1. And at the same time, we have a couple of identified amounts of expenditures. We have about $12.9 million in projected new expenditures in the new fiscal year, and these are things we tend to refer to as inflationary impacts. So, this is, the school system would stay the same, but it would cost more to run the school system. Some of the biggest drivers here are our utility costs and our employee benefits and retiree benefits. And there are others as well, but those would be two of the big examples. So, we're looking at a projection of 12.9 million there. And then we have five bargaining units, or five unions in Carroll County Public Schools. Two of those unions, and those are the acronyms for those two unions, have multi-year collective bargaining agreements or union contracts, and those contracts call for a salary increase for our case and our AFSA employees. These are our school-based educational support staff and our maintenance and building operations and custodian staff. And that cost to fund that third year of that promised salary package to those two groups is another $3 million. And so, where that nets us out is with 9.3 million in revenues projected and 12.9 in inflation and 3 million in contracts, we're looking at a deficit of $6.6 million. And so, some of the conversation that you're hearing about or watching is about this. And there were, there were a series of proposals raised and discussed at the board meetings to cover that gap. Ultimately, where the Board of Ed is at the moment in the process, and it's a process that continues, is that the Board of Ed, the majority of the Board of Ed made a, made a request to the county government for an additional $13 million in new revenues for July 1 to cover those deficits on the previous slide, to make the operating budget balance. And then there's fiscal compliance under the Blueprint. And again, that's not about more or less money. That's about how do we spend our money? And there's some slides that hopefully will explain this a little bit better in a second. But it's, it's all about spending money at the school level in the ways that the Blueprint requires. And having, having had the time to sort of do that analysis, get guidance from the state officials who are in charge of this, we now know that we have some pretty significant gaps in where we're spending money now versus where we need to spend it in the future, and those gaps collectively total $44 million. And that's a pretty large chunk of change, folks, not just in general. It's obviously a large chunk of change. But to our operating budget, that's somewhere around 10%. So, that's, that's a fairly significant part of the budget to now basically have to reallocate and reallocate from school to school. So, that process is also happening now, and I think that's what brought, brought most of you out tonight. The, where the Board of Ed, the majority of the Board of Ed is at the moment in terms of the, the $44 million in Blueprint Fiscal Compliance concerns is that they made a request to the commissioners for that additional amount of funding as well. So, 13 for the operating budget, 44 for Blueprint Fiscal Compliance, a total request of $57 million. These processes have to unfold at both the local and the state level. We don't know the final state budget numbers until the General Assembly concludes in early April. I think the last day is April 7 this year, but it would be close to that. And for the county, their budget process goes through May, usually around mid to late May. We'll have a sense from the county commissioners what the, what the county funding plan is looking like for the next fiscal year, and we're one part of that county funding plan, a big part of that county funding plan. So, we'll continue to, to look for that. So, that's, that's it for budget and Blueprint. So, what about Blueprint? What is fiscal compliance? The intent, the purpose of the Blueprint Law when it was enacted is this, is this theory or this belief or this intent at the state level that the money should follow the students to the school. You should spend most of your money at the school level, and beyond that, you should spend your money at the school level based on the populations of students in each school. And some of those groups of student populations that are important here that the state looks at are students who are identified as qualifying for compensatory education. These are students identified based on the family socioeconomic status. Traditionally, those, that's a, that's a category of students we have referred to as an acronym called FARMs or Free and Reduced Meal Students. Under Blueprint, the terminology is compensatory ed. Also, special education students is one of the groups that, that we need to look at for how we spend. And then multilingual learners, these are students who are, who have English as a second language. Historically, we have sometimes referred to those students as ESOL students. And so, it's not just about spending the money at the school level. That's one thing. We already spend more than enough money at the school level in the whole number to, under, under Blueprint. The problem is we don't spend the money at the school level in the correct buckets or programs, if you will, under Blueprint. So, we meet the 75% in the, in the total number, but it's not, it's not being aligned with, with where the state says it needs to be aligned. And now, here's a very complicated slide you can take home with you and ponder all night. This is how the state determines those amounts of money in those program areas, compensatory ed, special ed, ESOL, et cetera. They, these, these are numbers that are in the state law for 10 years. They, they put 10 years' worth of, of student targets in the state law, and these are numbers that are not literal, so it's not, you don't literally multiply our number of students enrolled by these numbers. But these are the bases for which the state, the state of Maryland issues funding to local school systems in Maryland, so I tend to call them targets. And so, the first column is just the base per pupil, just a head count of kids. It doesn't matter what other special population a student might fall into. We call that the foundation program. It's just the overall head count of kids. And these, these numbers you see in the, in the far left column after, after each fiscal year are the targets that the state uses to determine how much money it sends to each local school system. The state ranks every county by what it calls relative wealth, 1 through 24, including the city, 1 through 24. And then the state participates based upon those targets by basically providing more money to the school systems in Maryland that are the least wealthiest, and they provide proportionally less money to the school systems in Maryland that are the, that are wealthier in the, in the wealth rankings. And so, that's just sort of the threshold as to how the state funds. Where you see the other programs I mentioned, compensatory ed, ESOL, and special ed, where you see percentages for those areas, those percentages go back to the base per pupil amount. So, in fiscal year '25, which is the year we're in, the base per pupil amount is 8,789. That's the target for any student, just a student who, who is enrolled. And then, if that same student is enrolled and is also identified as a compensatory ed student, the state participates and requires money to be spent based on that identification at 86% of the foundation amount of 8,789, and so forth and so on across that, across that line. So, those are percentages of the base per pupil. And those are the amounts of money between the state's share and then the required county government's share that have to be spent at the school level, but in those programs. And there's a reporting manual and guidelines that we have to follow, and there's monthly expenditure reporting that we provide to the state of Maryland that tells us, do we have qualifying expenditures in these areas that meet the required amount of money by the end of the year? And what we now know is that we do not, particularly in the areas of compensatory ed and ESOL, to the tune of $45 million. Now, the problem is, well, there's a lot of problems with that. The problem is that money is spent somewhere, though, today. It's just not spent in the way in which Blueprint now wants it to be spent. But money is following students to the school level, and one student, and I know it's kind of, it bothers me too, folks. Please understand that we reduce children to dollar signs, but that's how the state formula works. We're talking about your kids. I know that the state attaches head counts to its formulas. So, one student could be worth one column on this screen. One student could be worth two of the columns on the screen. One student could be worth three of the columns on the screen. One student could possibly fall into all of those categories, and that amount of money is supposed to follow that child to the school where the child is. So, what does that look like? Here is an example. This is just one example. This is also last night, and tonight, we met with employees last night, tonight, and last night are the first times that we have, in the past, when we've done this kind of presentation, we, we've used School A and School B, theoretical schools. These are some real examples from Carroll County. This is Eldersburg and Tawnytown Elementary School. And what you can see on the top section is the total enrollment, just how many kids are there, period. And then how many students of that total fall into those other sub-populations of students. We can't show multilingual learners or ESOL because state data privacy rules say if there's a number of five or less, we can't show it because you might be able to, to then identify who those specific students are. But five or less is why there's an asterisk there. So, we have two schools that are similarly sized, but Eldersburg is, you know, a little bit bigger than, than Tawnytown. Prior to Blueprint, those two schools in Carroll County would have been funded in a way that Eldersburg would have generally received a little bit more funding than Tawnytown because Eldersburg has more students than Tawnytown, and we tended to staff trying to preserve a student-teacher ratio or sort of a set of existing class sizes. But under Blueprint, in the future, starting next year, although there's a two-year phase in here, but beginning next year, we have to begin to align all of our schools so that we're spending the right amount, right amount of money at the school level in those program areas. And so, this is what Blueprint would look like if we were fully compliant this year at those two schools. So, two schools that in the past, Eldersburg slightly more than, now you have a scenario where Tawnytown, based on its special populations of students, would receive, you know, $1 million more than Eldersburg. And this pattern, as an example, consists all over Carroll County. There's an Eldersburg and there's a Tawnytown, and that's at the, and so forth and so on, and that's at the elementary level and the middle school level and the high school level. And then, back, back to a thing that I said earlier, it, this gets very complicated. The money is already spent, though. It's not sitting somewhere waiting to be spent this way. It's being spent, and it's being spent at the school level. We are way above the required shares as a whole, but we're not spending it in the right ways. And so, we have to, we have to sort of reshape our schools in a way that we can spend the money in the sense that the state says it qualifies program by program. And so, we have to move from sort of that second bullet, kind of a situation where historically, we have staffed our schools kind of equally, just generally based on the total number of students. We tried to staff to have kind of the same class size and kind of the same programs. And there's blips here or there because you might get a bigger class one year than you expect, et cetera. But that's been generally the approach. And, and now that's no longer an okay approach. We're a little bit challenged compared to some other counties, I think. All counties in Maryland have to do this. All counties in Maryland have this process underway. I think we have a little extra pain here, and you're feeling it because of something else that's happened in the past. Between those fiscal years, that was a period where our student enrollment was declining every year, year over year over year over year over year. Ultimately, that total decline got to like 3,800 students or almost 4,000 students. And if those formulas are based on the number of students, and the number of students are going down, then there's less money coming to Carroll County in all of those years from the state. And in all of those years from the state, the less money coming to Carroll County each year totaled up to over $16 million. And so, if you've been a parent with us, if you are also an employee with us, and you were here for any of those years, you know that those were also painful years. We cut many, many expenditures. Just at face value, we would have had to have cut $16 million to cover the declining revenue from the state, but bills went up in those years, too. Utilities, healthcare, all of those things. Sometimes you had to cut to pay those new bills or extra, you know, increases to bills. And then, it would have been nice to give raises to our employees. Sadly, seven of those years, we didn't give any raises to our employees, but in the years where we really stretched to try to do it, there had to be some cutting to make that happen as well. The net total of that cutting, $40 million. We closed three schools ultimately. We also reduced 375 positions, and we did reduce school positions because if, if your workforce is in the school, it's, at a certain point, it's hard to avoid. But the first thing we did was reduced a lot of central office, and that's some of the pain point now. Other school systems going through this process might have proportionate to the size of their school system, those same 375 positions or whatever that would be for them, still available in central office to reallocate to the school level to make this math work. And those would be jobs that, like, for instance, things that we cut en masse were our system-wide professional developers, our teacher mentors, and many, many more, but a couple of those examples. Like, we, we are left with one professional developer after all of those years. You kind of have to have one. There's not things that we can take that aren't at the school level so easily to make the math work. So, our pain is also at the school level to make these changes. And I do think that's a little bit different from, from some other counties in Maryland. And so, we're, we're doing things at the school level, both in terms of, and Mr. Shokne is going to share more on this in a second, but we're doing things at the school level to both move teachers, let's say. So, I'm still a, I'm a teacher this year, and I'll be a teacher next year, but I might be a teacher in a different school next year than I am now or have been. We're also having to reduce positions as they exist now to free up the funding of those positions, to provide resources that could be positions, maybe other things, in those areas of compensatory education or in ESOL. And so, there's kind of two things here. Movement of staff, but also reducing staff positions in one way to create program needs staff in another way. And as I said, Nick will go through that more. And here is the why, or here is, here is the timeline from the state. Dr. McCabe referred to the Accountability and Implementation Board, or as I have, the acronym, AIB. That is the state governing body in charge of Blueprint and Blueprint compliance and all things Blueprint. Excuse me. And MSBE stands for the Maryland State Board of Education, who has some, some oversight here as well. So, those two bodies co-signed a policy last May that they call Joint Implementation Policy Number Two, and it gave all school systems in Maryland three years to bring their system into full Blueprint compliance. We're sitting in fiscal years. We're sitting in year one. Year two is next July. Year three is the July after that. In year one, we were required to make a good faith effort. Dr. McCabe formed a countywide work group that had her staff and school staff and unions and county government folks who joined us, and we did some analysis of the law. We did some analysis of work in other school systems. We mapped out the plan that is now being implemented that you're reacting to, that you've heard about or seen and, or reacting to. So, that's our good faith year one. In year two, we have to be 50% as a school system to compliant based on the percentage of students. We looked at many, many different ways to try to get there, and ultimately, the decision was based upon the fact that our enrollment breaks pretty evenly between elementary schools and secondary or middle and high schools together, that we made the decision that the way we'll get to 50% and then 100% is to bring all of our secondary schools to 100% compliance next year, and then the year after that, bring all of our elementary schools to 100% compliance. And I've talked about it in the big number of 44 million. Here's how it breaks down into the specific program areas, and I think Mr. Shokne's going to come up here, and he'll help fill in sort of what some of that means.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. I'm a little shorter, so hopefully the mic will be a little, a little closer.
Is that 44 million just for this year? Is it going to be another 44 million next year, and then another probably more than that next year, and then 50 million the year after that? I just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah. He wants to know. Yeah.
I think Dr. McCabe will have a question period at the end, so I'll just answer this one real quick. It's for, it's for those two years combined, and we may change and grow a little bit from year to year. Our students will change, but that should get us to the baseline that then we would have to move, move from a little bit from year to year.
All right. So, I'm going to talk us a little bit through the strategy to get us to, to get us to fiscal, touching some, to get us to fiscal compliance as required by the Blueprint. The first thing we are going to implement or implementing, a new classroom staffing allocation standard. And we've developed a tiered model or a differentiated model for how we staff our schools, and specifically, how we staff our classrooms. And that is very different than how we have historically staffed our schools. Mr., folks, I'm sorry. I'm trying not to touch a thing up here. Historically, we've, 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 we've staffed our schools with about the same resources, with some exceptions here and there. Those were all targeted and justified exceptions. But this new model is very different, and is going to result in, to get there, the elimination of positions and class size changes. I have some of the data charts that I've shown previously. They're in your packets. All of the complete data charts are on the CCPS website for you to be able to reference as well. When we reduce, when we reduce our number of teachers and we shift our number of teachers from one place to another, that will have a direct impact on the number of courses that we offer, specifically at the middle and really at the high school level. When we have less teachers in a building, we have less of an ability to offer a wide variety of course offerings. So, there will be an impact to that. We have, and I'll show in a moment here the chart, but a four-tier model. In addition to that, that doesn't get us all the way there. We have to reduce, eliminate, and repurpose additional positions, about 100 of them. And on top of that, we also have to change how we are delivering services to our multilingual learners. Mr. O'Neill hit on a couple of complicating factors. Lots of school systems are in the same position that we are in. However, other school systems have greater flexibility. Some school systems are choosing to solve the problem by taking staff that might work out of central office or a team that might be targeted in a particular area and assigning that resource to the school. In Carroll, we do not have that luxury. Our resources are already in our schools, and I think that's also what compounds this and makes this a difficult thing for some of our schools in order to move and shift resources and benefit other schools as well. I cannot say this enough. All of the positions that we have identified to either be reduced or eliminated or repurposed are essential. All of them are. They all provide a vital service to our kids and to you and to our families and to our community every single day. These aren't decisions we take lightly, and we fully recognize that the services and supports that we offer today, if this is the plan moving forward, will look different and in many ways will be less than the services and supports that we offer today in some places. But we will most definitely be able to offer more services and supports in other places. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we go. All right. So, I mentioned the classroom staffing allocation standard, so a little bit more specifics about that. We are, we have about 90 FTE, or classroom teacher positions that are going to shift. We also need to eliminate an additional 92 approximately FTE. These numbers are evolving and fluid. They'll change as we go. But again, schools with higher percentages of compensatory education eligible students will have a lower staff to student ratio, and schools with lower percentage of comp-ed students will have a higher staff to students ratios. So, projections, and this is just a slide that I, just to reiterate what I just said, that our numbers are fluid. They will evolve, but they're becoming more and more fine-tuned as we go. The first chart, and this is just a summary chart. I include all the summary charts here. The detailed charts are on the board website. But this just breaks down our elementary schools by tiers. You'll see that there are four tiers. Tier one are our schools with our lowest number of compensatory education eligible students. Tier four are our schools with the highest number of compensatory education eligible students. And you can see the breakdown here. This first chart breaks down the, the classroom, the FTE change by grade, by, by level. I'm going to try not to touch the podium and see if that helps. Please keep in mind how we staff at the elementary, middle, and high school levels are all very different. How we teach at each level is all very different, and our scheduling is all very different. So, there's a little bit of a, of a breakdown of what those numbers include. It's a little bit different at each, each level. It's a little bit different at each level. Average class sizes, this is the average class size as it stands and is projected across all schools at each level. And the change relatively small here on this, but again, this is the average across all schools at each level. But the next couple of charts start to break it down a little bit further and start to identify by tier now, what are some ranges in average class sizes? And that's where you see at the elementary, middle and high school level, at tiers one, we have a much higher projected average. At tiers four at each level, we have a much lower projected average. So as I said before, the addition or the implementation of a staffing standard doesn't get us there all the way. There are additional positions that we've needed to either eliminate, reduce or repurpose in some way to get us there. These are those positions. I've shared these before. The position lists are not new. I've got them broken down by category. The first is central office and administrative positions. There's also an implementation timeline. As Mr. O'Neal referenced, our plan has us implementing secondary strategies next school year, elementary school strategies the following year, roughly 50% each year, which is the requirement under Blueprint that will bring us to 100% compliance at the end of two years from this school year. These are all essential positions. All of them provide vital roles in our schools today, as are these positions. And as are these positions. All are vital and all are embedded in our work that we do. All right. So this slide just sums up kind of each of the different strategies and where the application is going to go. Again, we need to do things differently under the Blueprint. All right. So where we are today and what we're doing and where we're going to go. So our board has made a request for additional funding. We've talked about that already. We're in the process of working with our staff and communicating with our staff to make sure that they are aware. We are also in the negotiations process whenever we have something involving staff. We have master agreements that identify processes for how staff move when we're in situations like we are in. So we are working with our bargaining units to clarify those processes. We will continue to seek strategies to maximize and become more efficient with the strategies that we've identified. The plan will evolve. I think this is the, you know, the core of it has been established, but obviously if there's an efficiency as we go, we will look to do that. At the March Board of Education meeting, at the March Board of Education meeting, I'll provide a breakdown of the changes and what we can expect with course offerings. If you tuned into Board of Education meetings, you've heard us speak about those. And I'll provide a little bit more information on what the changes to our course offerings at the secondary level will look like. Additional resources, as I mentioned earlier, all of the tools that we've referenced before, our reports, they're very detailed, but I encourage you to go check those out. There's a lot of background information to explain why we're here and what we're planning to do. It includes our fiscal compliance work group report. We'll continue to update the site with information. We're developing a frequently asked questions document as we go. And then there'll be links to the town halls that we've had both tonight. As John mentioned earlier, we had our town hall with our employees last night as well. So with that, I'll turn things back over to Dr. McCabe.
Thank you, Mr. Shockney. I also, before we begin questions and answers, I wanted to acknowledge Delegate Josh Stanko, who did come in after the presentation began. Josh has been just wonderful working with us down in Annapolis, getting us the meetings that we needed to get with the people we need to speak to about our issues with Blueprint. So before we open this up to questions and answers, I want to again reiterate that we have deep, deep concerns about what we are having to do. That's why we are meeting in Annapolis regularly, to try to find a way to either get a waiver or to get something to happen so that we don't have to take what I would consider way too many resources from one school to give to another school. Again, we want to give more resources to kids who need them. What we don't want to do is take too much away from other schools in order to do it. But the law says we have to right now. So that's where we are. And I know that this presentation, again, has been complex, complicated. We're trying to take a law that's hundreds of pages long and condense it into something that we can present on in a half an hour or 45 minutes. So at this point, we're going to take about a half an hour and answer some questions. What I'd like to request that you do is we have a microphone set up here. You can form a line behind the microphone and when you're called on, please give us your name, the school that your children attend, and then you can ask the questions that you may have. Let's start with our first question.
Good evening, everyone. I will wait till the room is quiet. Thank you. My name is Joshua Willhide. I have two children that attend Mechanicsville Elementary School, and my question is twofold. One, yesterday at the county commissioners meeting, it became clear that the county does have the money to fund this for at least one year, but they're concerned that if they take on this obligation, that it will be a repeating obligation year after year. So if we were able to convince our commissioners to actually fund this for at least one year, would that be able to stop these changes to happen for at least one year? If you were given the full amount to cover this, would you have to fire anyone for the first year?
No. If we were given the full amount, if we were given, let's say, $57 million, if we were to operate like that from then on, of course, it would have to be ongoing money. But I-
But if you were given the funding for at least one year, this would delay these cuts for at least one year.
That's correct.
Then everyone needs to email their commissioners right here in this room. Commissioner Rothstein is over there and he was curious to hear what the public had to have. And so if you do not want this to happen, Carroll County has the money to at least delay this for one year. He's right there. Email him. His email is in the front of this paper. Secondly, my second question is, is what do I have to do to fight this long term? If I have to go to Annapolis, I will go to Annapolis and fight for my children. If I can get one more year out of this, what do I have to do in Annapolis to make this change permanent?
There are legislators on the sheet that you're holding. I would strongly suggest that you email those legislators. Not only are they our legislators, but they're the ones who are on the different committees in Annapolis that make these decisions. You can also go to Annapolis whenever they're having an open session. You can sign up to give testimony. I don't know if the time for that is over, but please check on that on the website. You know, you are right that this is, this is a situation that is going to require us to not only look at local remedies, but it's a state issue. The Blueprint for Maryland's Future is a state law. It's nothing that our locals did now, but now we have to work together to figure out how to fund it or how to work with the state to either get a waiver or get some kind of consideration.
But if you were given at least one year, that would delay it a year?
Well, yes.
He's right there. Email him. Email him!
Hi, my name is Lisa Masano. I have children at Linton Springs and Sykesville Middle. So my question is on slide number seven. Can you hear me? Sorry. It just went off. Can you hear me?
Go ahead and ask your, I was going to say, if you can go ahead and ask your question, even if it's not working, I will restate the question before I answer it.
Okay. So my question is on page seven. Does each school also get 100% of the foundation amount to spend at their school? In other words, Katoni Town gets 75% of their foundation amount spent at their school and then Eldersburg can get 100% of their foundation amount per student to help close the gap some.
It's the same for all of the program areas, including foundations. So the state law requirement is 75% of the money at each school level. So yes, both would get the full amount. And we actually already spend way more than the required amount of foundation at every school.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
My name is Kristen Christie. I have students at Century, Sykesville Middle and Linton Springs, and they represent a broad spectrum from gifted students to children with IEPs. And my question is, if the resource teachers are being slashed so dramatically, how are you planning to meet the legally binding contracts of IEPs to fulfill the support required by the law?
That's a really good question and I want to make sure everybody understands tonight that's here. We will provide our individualized education program services without fail, no matter where your child is. So if your child has an IEP, those services must be provided. We don't have any, you know, we don't have any cushion there. So we will provide those. Where my concern is, is for the child who does not qualify for an IEP but is having reading problems or having math problems, and we don't have enough interventionists or reading specialists in the school that they go to. That's what keeps me up at night right now. But to be sure, we will fulfill our IEP services.
How will you do that if the staff is not in place?
Because we're not cutting special education teachers in the schools that we have to, in any of the schools. We've got to have enough special education teachers in each school to meet the IEP in that school. So every year, we will look at that and determine how much we have to have in each school in order to meet that, meet that plan.
Hello?
Hello?
Okay. I'm just going to be loud.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Ashley Williams. I have students at Linton Springs Elementary School. I want to start by saying that I worked in Howard County as a teacher. I came here to Carroll County. I wanted to be in the same system as my children. I stayed for one year because I couldn't take the pay cut that was required for me to come here and had to move on to another county so that I could make a good living for my children and my family. We already expect our teachers to do so much with so little. I look at what our teachers have to do and the differentiation they have to provide for our students. Yes, Linton Springs is a tier one school. There are still 15% of students in that school who have comp ed, who are comp ed students. By reducing their teachers and making their class sizes significantly larger, upwards of 10 students per class larger based on the numbers, we are going to sacrifice the education of that 15%. And I understand that we want to support our students who have more comp ed students, but at what sacrifice to our students who need those services at our tier one schools? It doesn't make, and I understand, I'm well versed in the budget as an educator, I understand the blueprint, but we have to advocate more for our students. I also just want to say that I, as a special educator, I understand that special education services aren't being cut, but in general education services are also a component of an IEP. And so those students who have in general education services, who maybe now have 22 students in their class, when there are 35 students in their class, those hours don't look the same and those kids are not getting what they need. And unfortunately, this is going to drive parents to look elsewhere and we're not going to improve our school system. We're going to help profit the private schools around our county.
You are absolutely right. I not only fear that we're going to have teachers who leave, I fear that absolutely we are going to have parents who pull their students out and decide to put them into a private school setting. And because of that, these are the exact conversations that I'm having with folks in Annapolis. Because I don't, at my core, I do not believe that the intent of Blueprint was to harm any child. But what happens is when the rubber hits the road and you operationalize a law, there are unintended consequences and that's what we're seeing right now. And so that's why we're working so hard to try to get the law changed or get amendments or get waivers. And that's why we're going to bat because it's all of our kids who are, especially in this area, who will suffer the most. Thank you.
Hi. Hi. My name is Lehman Tuttle. I am the parent of two kids at Sandy Mount Elementary. I wanted to, first of all, thank you for hosting it, especially when you're sick. I appreciate you taking the time. There's a lot of grumpy people out here, so thanks for doing that. That said, I am concerned that taking the Blueprint and throwing all of the ills of the situation at its feet, I think is irresponsible at best. We have county commissioners who are setting a budget for our county and yeah, you know, maybe the budgets are tight. All of us are tightening our belts right now. We're all feeling the pinch. It's been tough for a couple of years, but I think that it's our responsibility to step up at the county level and fill these gaps if necessary. Budgets are about priorities. Everyone here, when you're looking at your budget, month to month, year to year, you're finding what is the thing that is the most important and finding ways to move things around to make that happen. And I think our county needs to do it.
My specific question is, while all of this is horrific in terms of the numbers in classes, my chief concern right now is our outdoor school. One of the most important and most unique aspects of Carroll County school system is the outdoor school. One of the reasons that I took my kids here was that the county has a stated obligation to the outdoors, to agriculture, to, you know, getting people to love of nature. And when my wife and I heard that that was on the chopping block, we are tearing out the county's values by the roots doing that. So I really think that we need to get on our county commissioner's case. I wrote mine and got a message from the communications department. I did not get a message from my commissioner. So yeah, whatever we need to do, if our kids are a priority, going back to budgets, budgets are about priority. If our kids are a priority, we need to treat them like one. Thank you.
My name's Wayne Willoughby. I am not, I do not have any kids currently in the school system. I actually moved to the county 30-plus years ago, so my two kids could go to the school system in Carroll County, one of whom has become a teacher. And my concern as a, not a person with a child in the school, but as a resident of this county is, are people aware of the downstream effect it's going to have on us, what this is doing? Businesses locate to areas. I don't know what that was, but okay. Businesses locate where there's an educated workforce. How are these changes going to affect the education of our students and the readiness for them to assume more and more complex jobs in this more and more complex world? How is it going to affect the applicants for college coming from the county, especially the South County? And I look at the schedules about the tier one schools. Oh, they're going to only pick up on average four people or five extra students or something. No, they're not. They're going to pick up a lot. How the heck, and let me ask professional educators, because I'm certainly not one, how the heck do you educate 40 kids in a classroom or 35 kids in a classroom? One more, one more question and I'll be gone. A question and a half, if I may. The question is this, the Kerwin Commission, the Blueprint or whatever it's called, this isn't something that just popped up this year, is it?
No.
Where was our county commission in supporting the Carroll County Public Schools through the past four or five years, planning ahead for the day when the bill would be due?
I can tell you that we've been having these conversations publicly as well as privately for, since 2021, since it passed. So- privately, for, since 2021, since it passed. So.
Then it is a shame and a tragedy that we're here tonight having to meet. This should have been planned out years ago with proper support for the school system. With that, I'll say goodnight.
Um, hello. My name's Ava Persad. I'm currently a junior here at Century.
Hello. My name is Cassidy Lively, and I'm also here a junior at Century.
Yeah. And Cassidy and I have been friends for all of middle school, high school, and I've witnessed the both of us nurture our love for our future career, our future college education, through the specific courses that we've been allowed to take at Century. Cassidy's into animal science, and that is a very niche field. And the fact that we have those resources available for classes like that, I'm interested in developmental psychology, working with children, working in psychology. And I think, like, my child adolescent development class that I took only had maybe 18 kids in it, and it was the most impactful class I've ever taken in my life. And I think these resources are so important for nurturing love for the future. And we are going to get so many diverse people with so many diverse interests that are losing that because of moving around of stuff. And I think that is so tragic. And my main question comes in with the class sizes, because I know that I, my freshman year, was taking a technical theater class, so not an academic class. And it was in one of the biggest classrooms in the school, because our drama classroom is massive. I'm sorry. And there were 32 kids in my class, and it was chaos. And my academic classes are, on average, I'd say, like, 23 kids. And individualized attention in class is so important. I'm in all honors, all AP classes, and I would not be able to support myself in school without the help of my one-on-one teachers. And I think just, like, for an average of 33 students in a tier one school in a classroom, our classrooms aren't big enough for that. Our teachers can't support that in a 90-minute lesson to give everyone the individualized attention they need. Like, I know for an exact example, in my AP line class right now, my teacher is having one-on-one conferences with our students in our class. And there are less than 20 kids in that class, and it has taken over a week because this attention is so important. And I think especially for development-wise, at the elementary school level, a projected high of 44 children in an elementary school classroom is frankly absurd to me. I, I, I went to elementary school in Baltimore County, where we did have more children in the classroom. And when I moved here, the difference it makes to have individualized attention as a young child is so important. I was a very gifted child, and I remember at my elementary school, I was put in the back of the classroom and forced to do worksheets that were, my class wasn't doing, because I was in a different level than these other kids. And if I had had attention from the county, and I've been put in different classes and supported differently, that would have had such an impact on me at such an early age. And I think the resources in this county are so special, and the idea of cutting them really is horrifying. So like, how do we expect, like, I just don't understand, at the elementary level, increasing classroom, classroom sizes to that big, how that's going to work for the teachers?
Exactly, exactly. And how will we keep teachers? You know, who's going, who, I don't know of any teacher who's going to want to teach in a classroom of 40 students and, as I said earlier, not have access to professional supports. It's, it's beyond concerning. And I, and I want to just praise you for your courage to stand up and.
So I also have a question. I had the privilege of going to outdoor school last week. And as a student, I find that so, so important for education. And someone who's passionate in environmental science and benefiting our earth and saving, like, the planet as a whole, I just want to know, I think, we as a state, as a green state, who find, who take pride in becoming green, becoming green, and having ways to, like, sorry, help develop the earth and help get us back to decreasing the ozone layer, and someone who's taken an AP environmental science class, I think this is very important for that education. I just want to know how that learning and how that access to knowledge about these important factors that are going to impact us and are impacting us currently, how that is going to be reprimanded and put back into the education system?
Yeah, exactly. We, we've got a lot of our seventh grade science curriculum actually is taught in sixth grade, when, when our sixth graders go to outdoor school. So if we were to have to get rid of outdoor school, we would have to go back to the drawing board on a lot of things, one of which is how to fit that curriculum in in another way. And, you know, certainly, there's not going to be any other way to, to make it as hands-on and engaging as outdoor school currently is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheri Lively. I have two children in Carroll County Public Schools. Cassidy Lively, who's in high school, and I have a son at Sykesville Middle. I know that we've talked a lot about the blueprint today and moving and shifting and cutting things, but having read through the entire blueprint multiple times and done some research on it, I think there is a part of it that we haven't heard about, that I want to get a little more information about. The beginning of the blueprint does talk about how there is some support from the state in recruiting, supporting, and bringing in high-quality teachers, the diversity of the teachers to match the diversity of the school system. And there's a lot of information in the blueprint that does support that from the state. There's a 10-step program in there on getting information out on not only hiring, but educating and giving more information to new, new teachers that are coming in, those that are coming right out of college, students that are in high school who want that as their career, career and tech students, which we have an amazing program here that do that, and how we can support them. And being that we're talking about shifting and moving, why have we not, in the past five years, four years now, in board meetings, or is a community put that as a forefront on the plate, on not just moving and shifting and taking from what we have, but increasing what we could have as a potential to grow and improve the quality and, and add on to what an amazing community we have in our, our school system and the teachers and the administrators that we have?
Great question. The Board of Education's strategic plan has an entire pillar, pillar three, on developing our workforce. And so much of what you're saying is in that plan, and it, it go, it aligns completely with the blueprint, and that was by design. The last thing that we've been doing, that we just got, that we just got off the ground, and it will be starting this fall, is, is a new program for our new hires, because we all know the hardest time for a new teacher is when they first come in, those first five years, they're either going to make it or break it, and many leave the profession in the first five years. So we are working with the Nancy S. Grasmic Leadership Institute in Towson University to develop a new professional learning program for all of our new teachers in our system. That's, again, something that we've never had before. We are getting it off the ground this year, and we're very, very proud of it. And it's going to fill a lot of gaps that we've had in the past. So I appreciate, I appreciate your focus on workforce. And it's something that we are, it's something that we have had to look at in a lot more detail since COVID. We lost a lot of educators during COVID. And since then, we've had to put a lot more effort into, into hiring and into keeping the good people that we have. So thank you for that.
My other question is, being that this has been out on, out on the docket since 2021, you mentioned that, that this has been presented in our community by yourself, and I guess your team, but having gone to multiple board meetings and, and seen what the Board of Education has done, it has been brought up on a small percentage of the time, has not been a focus at many of the board meetings. You can go back and watch them. There are a couple of board members that do bring it up, and it has been shot down as not important over the years. There have been other things that have been brought up that, as a parent, I, I feel like I'm not the only one, that don't seem to be as important at the time. And now, you know, here we are at the last hour, and this has become something where we're having a town hall meeting, where a lot of the people up until probably the last six days are in shock and had no idea. So I feel like communication is something that, as a school system, as, you know, a team that you have, it needs to be increased. It needs to be more to the parents, to the families. It cannot continue like this. This is not something that we can do.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Barno. I have a student at Oklahoma Road Middle School and a student at Liberty High School. And with so many questions out there, right now, I am questioning the legality and motivation for cutting school library media specialists in secondary schools. There is a Maryland School Regulation 13A.050401 that says in each school, certified school library media personnel and support staff should be there. They instruct students, work with teachers, information literacy, research, critical thinking skills, which are important to get our students college and career ready. And if our class sizes are getting larger, those teachers and those students need that support. It also says that each local school system superintendent shall certify to the state superintendent that the elementary and secondary school library media programs meet or are working toward meeting the requirements set forth in these regulations. So how can you be working toward those when you are cutting what is already in place that follows the law?
We're working with the state on that right now. The state approved our plan, which includes cutting most of the media specialists in middle and high school, which upsets all of us. No one, not, no one wants to do that. I will also say that we've had our, our attorneys involved in this decision. They've been in contact with the attorneys at MSDE. And I've been working with my colleagues, the other superintendents around the state. I can also just say that there are, there are other systems that do not have a media specialist at every school. Do I think that's right or good? Absolutely not. And so that's something that we will continue to talk with the state about and see if we can come up with something so that we can continue to have those resources that we need.
I know, based on the experience that the county has had with things like book banning and special interest groups, it does seem to myself and, and other people that I've talked to, that it is the interest of those groups as a motivation for conveniently sticking it to the media specialists where our kids.
I, I agree that as soon as we knew we were going to have to do that, that's the first thing we thought about, is that's, that's exactly what that's going to look like. I can tell you that, that it was not any kind of motivation in making that cut. And you can also see the great array of cuts that we had to make. It wasn't to one particular group. It was across the board with many, many positions that we, that we value deeply. So, yeah, my hope is that we will get some relief and that, you know, we won't have to, we won't have to do it. We won't have to get rid of all of those media specialists. We're still in that fight. We're still having those conversations.
Hi, my name's Kristen Morenelli. I have a student at Oklahoma Road. Watching the BOE meetings, it seems nothing of substance has been done for five years of blueprint, except complain about state overreach. Piggyback on the other comments that this is the last minute, and here we are. If you're considering firing 90 teachers, you need to think outside the box to find other savings first. This shouldn't be the first knee-jerk response. Firing teachers, cutting academic programs, and unreasonably large class sizes should all be unacceptable. I think everyone in here, that's why we're here. Like, we're pissed off. This is wrong. Are there any cuts coming to the tech center? Or are they all academic programs and teachers? I know the tech center is loved here, but that's not applicable to the career goals of all students in Carroll County. If all the schools are suffering cuts, they should also be having something taken away. Another unpopular thing to consider, possible cuts to athletics. CCPS spends almost $1.7 million on coaching salaries every year and $400,000 on laundry. I support athletics completely. My daughters are athletes. But the point of school is pride and education. If we're cutting AP classes and reading specialists, maybe we need to consider other areas first. I haven't heard any discussion about athletics being cut. The director, but what about the coaching?
There will be no sports in two years. You don't have an athletic director.
I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating to cancel everything. I'm just saying, if we're firing 90 teachers, maybe this is something to consider. Other school districts have football and other athletic events Saturday afternoons. It doesn't line up with tradition, but they do this to save money on electricity. BGE rates have gone through the roof. There are more rises, more raises coming. Is that even a consideration? I feel like we're firing teachers and not looking at other ways we can possibly save money.
Is that?
I have more to think of.
Okay. So we have thought about all of that. I, I don't, I don't want anybody in this room to think that, you know, the clock struck 12, and we just decided, oh, this is what we're going to do. We've been working on this since the law was passed in 2021. We have to do this in such a way that our plan is approved by the state. We have looked at all kinds of ways to save money. And as Mr. O'Neil said earlier, over 85% of our budget is people. I mean, we're a school system. We, we staff people to work with kids. So when 80, when over 85% of your budget is in people, that's what you have to cut and/or reorganize and move around. And we have cut, over the years, we have cut everywhere we could cut that did not affect the school. And that's why we have a central office that is 24th out of 24 school districts in the people that it houses and supports. Yes, we are looking at utilities as well. We're, we're looking at everything. And what we're trying to do, what we've tried to do, is, you know, is do this in such a way that it, that it affects the least amount of students. But, you know, this, it's not a good, it's just not a good situation. And like I said, that's why we are continuing our conversations and not giving up.
Okay. No, I agree. It's not good. Students at Liberty High have been told they won't be able to take electives. If they've taken their graduation requirements, there aren't going to be other courses for them to choose from. So they've been told they'll have to go get a work permit. Not an internship, but a work permit. So am I supposed to be okay with my daughter, who's going to be a freshman next year, by the time she's maybe a junior and she's run her requirements, just going and working at McDonald's or Royal Farms? Like, instead of getting an education? That's what, our students are being told is going to happen?
I, I would not, I wouldn't say that all of that information is accurate. And I'm sure that there could be some misunderstandings out there based on what someone sees on the news one night, or what someone reads in an article. But we are trying as best we can to make sure that our staff gets the right information so that they can give that to our students and families.
Okay. My older daughter just went through the college application process. She's a freshman in college this year. Our kids, at least in the southern part of the county, are definitely going to be at a distinct disadvantage when they're applying for jobs. They are going to be getting the bare minimum education. They're not going to get scholarships. They're going to be lucky to be accepted into a college. And I find that completely unacceptable. We moved here for the schools, and this, all the admissions offices are going to look at CCPS and say, these kids aren't qualified. It's going to affect everyone. Staff reductions in the past shouldn't be used as an excuse to affect these children's education. And my daughter's at Orem's. Her class size is already at the projected size. She already has 33 kids in her honors classes. So how big are these classes going to be? Because they're going to be even larger than what we've been told. And how is this going to meet fire codes?
We, we, we've asked the same question. We actually are looking at fire codes and working with the fire marshal and all of this, which is a sad, sad state of affairs.
In summary, make no mistake, CCPS is no longer going to be considered a quality school system. Our property values are going to drop. True leaders would take a salary cut before firing all these staff. I haven't heard any high-level administrators here offer to take a cut to their own salaries. Your literal job, your literal job is to ensure a quality education for the children in Carroll County. None of this is acceptable for the kids in the southern part of the county. This needs to be fixed, and it's your job.
Thank you.
Hi, Elise Lesnar. I have two children at Mechanicsville Elementary. So I understand this was passed in 2021. We're using data from 2009, 2019. A lot, a lot has changed since. A lot, a lot has changed since then, right? For six years, a lot, especially in Carroll County, has changed. I think I'm not going to repeat everything that's gone over, but I think, you know, for the better. Carroll County has changed, you know, exponential growth in the school systems. Is there a chance for the state to reconsider what is coming into our county? And also, you know, when are we going to reevaluate what, you know, how the teachers are going to be redistributed, right? So if this is going to take place in 2027, like, how often are we going to look to see the compulsory, you know, students throughout the schools?
That's a great question. And we did our tiering system, tiers one, two, three, and four, in such a way that we will, we'll have to look at that every year, but we did that and the percentages in such a way that we do not anticipate if we've moved a staff member one year from one place to another, that we'll then have to take that staff member and move them somewhere else. So we're working as much as we can to make our tiers and our percentages such that once you've moved somewhere, you're not going to have to move again.
But I mean, so, I mean, like, every year, so you're not going to be reevaluating if, like, the demographics of the schools changing? I mean, right, people may be moving out of the county if their school system isn't as great as it was, you know, the year before. They're going to be pooling their children out. So, you know, the schools are going to, might be changing quite drastically the following year.
We have to reevaluate that every year.
Okay, so it'll be right. And I did want to ask that gentleman's question. My child is, you know, going to be one of those kids who's going to have 45 kids in his classroom, and the safety is a great concern for me, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kendra Saldman. I have one student at Century High School and one that just graduated last year. I also just want to point out that I'm also a special educator in Montgomery County. And the reason I'm in Montgomery County is because I drive an hour, because I cannot afford to take the teacher's salary here. I've always been in awe of our teachers here. I think they're amazing. My children have gotten nothing but the best education from these teachers, and they're passionate, and they take that lower salary because of their passion. I'm concerned. I had, both of my children went through Eldersburg Elementary School. There is absolutely no way, and it's appalling, I agree with you Ava, that we are trying to fit 44 kids in that school. It's not going to work. And I don't even, like, is that the cap? Is that absolutely the highest it's going to go?
Well, my hope is yes. I don't think that we're going to see a situation where we will have more than 44. I hope that we won't have 44 in many places. That's going to be our goal. And that's another topic of the conversations that we're having in Annapolis is really, how many students are too many students in a classroom? And when Blueprint was passed, you know, what was the thinking on that? I know that the research that the Kerwin Commission used stated that class size doesn't matter. But we all who are practical educators know that absolutely it does matter.
I have a second part of this, too. As a special educator, I mean, I know you said you're not cutting the special education. This goes back to the first question. There is no way for you to meet the special education needs of those 44 kids. And I don't know, like, what your plan is. I hear a lot of, like, it's the state's problem, and I hear a lot of, you know, we're hoping for the money. But reality is, if you don't get it, what is your plan?
Right. Right now, we're meeting about that. And, you know, part of me, when we decided to have this meeting tonight, part of me knew it was going to be hard to have a town hall right now without having all the answers. I'm not going to have all the answers to how much we're going to be getting from the commissioners for next year and how much the state is going to be willing to work with us on some of this, you know, until April and May. But my heart said, we have to have these town halls now so that people know the situation that we're in. So yes, I apologize that we don't have all of the answers right now and that we are working hard every day on them, but I thought it was the better decision to get this out here now rather than wait any longer. So thank you for that.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Porter, and I am a special education paraprofessional at Robert Moten Elementary. I also am the president of CASE, representing assistants and clericals in Carroll County Public Schools. I wanted to bring another layer to the conversation this evening. I am part of the educational team that serves your students in our county. It is a team. And I want to say that while none of us want this Blueprint compliance to impact students, please, when you're contacting your elected officials, please don't forget the operational side of the House. My bargaining unit and the custodian and maintenance people had negotiated in good faith, two and a half years ago, a closed contract because we were not included in the Blueprint. There are no minimum salaries for us. There are no career ladders for us. And because of the shortfalls that we're having, our county can't honor that third year of our agreement. And let me bring that a little bit more into perspective for all of you. I am in my 26th year in Carroll County Public Schools. I am a proud educator. I have helped deliver professional learning at the local level and am getting ready to go to the national level for my second year in a row to help deliver it there. In my 26th year, I'm one of the people who is at the top end of my scale. I'm fortunate. I'm also fortunate to be one of those that has benefits. And the county commissioners commissioned a housing study last year, and the results came out in December 24th of last year that said in order to reasonably afford a one-bedroom apartment in Carroll County, Maryland, you needed to earn over $63,000. Last year, I earned less than $39,000, and I'm trying to live on that as a single person. So please don't forget, all of us who clean your schools, help your needy students, help you in your offices when you write your elected officials.
Hi, I'm Springer Field. My children go to and will go to Sandy Mount Elementary. I have two questions. The first is, obviously, we have a large room of people who are wanting to take action, want to know what we can do. You mentioned testifying in Annapolis and attending open sessions. Obviously, the Blueprint has already been passed, so could you specify a little bit more on what we could testify for, what open sessions we could attend? And is there, are there any bills actually on the floor that that would be applicable for?
What our staff can do is send information out. We'll do a blast for that for you. But basically, what they've been looking at in this session is amendments, possible amendments to the bill, to the law. And so they've been looking at that. I went down, all of the superintendents across Maryland went down and testified, as well as, you know, other folks that are being affected. So that's a great point, and our office will get that information out through School Messenger.
Thank you. And the second part, you mentioned all the positions and whatnot that'll be reallocated or eliminated. Is there more detail to what order those will go and what the plan is for if part of the requested additional budget is allocated or, you know, depending on how much, if any of it, all of it, whatnot, and what order that would go to, since I think a lot of people have vested interest in various portions of it and want to be able to address that with whomever they plan on contacting and discussing that with?
Yeah. We're working on that now. I would say that when you look at that list, we'll look at, we'll look at folks who are further away from the classroom first, and we will try to preserve people working directly with children first.
And so when, you know, you say you're looking at it, do you have kind of a timeline as to when those plans might be made? And you can't make the decision until you know it's been allocated, but the plans as to what would be tackled, eliminated, et cetera, first? Because we might have different definitions as to what's most impactful.
Oh, no, go ahead. Hi, good evening. I'm Josh Thonko. I represent District 42C in the House of Delegates, so the North Carroll area. So I know most of you are from Southern Carroll County, but I wanted to be here tonight because I stand strongly on your side. And while I don't represent South Carroll, Carroll County is Carroll County, right? And I care passionately about the school system. We just had, I apologize if it's not your last name. I know her as Mrs. Porter because I went to school with her daughter. So I grew up in Carroll County. I went to Manchester Elementary School, North Carroll Middle School, North Carroll High School, and I was in the first graduating class at Manchester Valley. So I'm, I live in Carroll County now, right? So I'm this Carroll County-focused and focused on our students. As someone that went to outdoor school and loved outdoor school, went back as a counselor at outdoor school, like, I am fully aligned with everything that you are sharing here tonight about how you feel. So there's a couple of things that I, because of the questions that you asked, there's a couple of things that I need all of your help with. And I'll talk about why and what we're trying to do in Annapolis. What I don't want to do in this moment, for a lot of different reasons, is turn this into an overly partisan framework. You know, what I can share with you about the folks that are here and who I work with in Annapolis that represent Carroll County is that everyone, I was not there at the time, but all of our members of Carroll County voted against the Blueprint. So Delegate Krebs, Senator Reedy, Senator Rose, sorry, Delegate Rose, and I hope I'm not missing anybody, they all voted against it. That said, we are what we are today, and that's really what matters now. We're aggressively, and this has been basically the only issue that I've worked on for the last two months of session, I basically have decided to address no other issue, talk about no other issue with leadership in Annapolis. And leadership in Annapolis agrees with me on almost nothing, right? So leadership in Annapolis is a Democrat Governor Wes Moore, led by a Democrat State Senate and a Democrat...
[inaudible]
No, 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 but I'll get to why. I understand. No, I'm saying, I understand. Appreciate it. The, but my point is that we're trying to not do that, right? So we're trying to make it where... We're trying to make sure that they're aware of the issue. So to your exact point, my, the group I have worked closest with in this is a group I almost never land on the same side of the issue on, which is the Maryland State Education Association. I'm a conservative Republican. I usually do not agree with the things that they try to put forward. And they have been the main group that has worked with me to try to get, to put forward a framework that, I'm going to use the framework of, to not have this happen. And we are, and what I'm here and why I stepped up to the mic to talk to you is because I need, and these folks, they have been working with the state regulators, the AIB, the Accountability Implementations Board, along with, the MSEA has helped us with this, the CCEA has helped us with this. And what I need your help with is, there are a couple of names that are missing, and this is even more powerful, and this is not about Republican or Democrat, to your point, right? But it's the people that are the decision makers that I need your help with. And when I say this is, you all came here tonight, we still have a line that's here. I need every one of you to ideally make a phone call and send an email telling them that the issues in Southern Carroll County are not acceptable, right? In its simplest, and that we need their assistance in doing what another one of you said, which is why you moved here and why you live in Carroll County, which is to have a great public education system. Right? And so the first one is going to be, his name's Ben Barnes. So I'm going to pull up the direct email. And the last is, the last part of it is, it'll follow what you see Vanessa Atterbury, and she is also one of the people. So just give me one second, I'll pull this up.
Are they on this paper?
They're not. So if you have a pen, that would be great. There's, some of them are and some of them are not. So Vanessa's on the paper. So Ben is B E N period Barnes, B A R N E S, at house dot state dot M D dot U S. So that last part of that piece, it's also, you see that's similar as to what you see from Vanessa.
Can you repeat that?
Absolutely. Ben, B E N, period Barnes, B A R N E S, at house dot state dot M D dot U S. Ben was one of the original drafters of the Blueprint. And he has been, and to his credit, to the woman that just made that comment, he's been open to this dialogue with me. I thought we would be shut out completely, and he's been having this. But that's where I need your help to understand, so that he understands how big of an issue this is in Carroll County. And the reason why is this is that they have different issues in other counties, and those counties are focused on those issues where they come from. And I, and any help that I can get from the public to explain how big of an issue this is to them is really appreciated. So I want to, that's one of the main people. I need you to make sure you reach out to Vanessa Atterbury. I'm meeting with her next Tuesday. Please also reach out to the first three that are listed, Bill Ferguson, Adrian Jones, Brian Feldman. And I echo the concern about class sizes. And you asked about things, there was a bill that was on the floor today. We put an amendment in that was to cap class sizes, and the state of Maryland's view, not my view, right? So to make it clear, the state of Maryland's view is that class sizes are not an outcome determined of education results. I don't agree with that point of view, but that's the state of Maryland's point of view in the Blueprint. And so please, and I know there were some folks that mentioned readings, and I would also say, please also write to Governor Moore, because Governor Moore's bill was what was on the floor today, which was recodifying the current state. They recodified current state of Blueprint. It was basically 98% of the same bill. And it's important, you know, that, again, the governor also is aware, so let me pull up his info as well, because it is, I've also had a meeting with him in the last two weeks, or his team in the last two weeks. So this is not a new issue to him, but to raise the importance and awareness is really All right, so first off, if you don't, you can also just do a Google of contact the Governor Wes Moore, but you can also, let's see, they have a, so actually, I'm going to ask everyone to do this. There is a contact page, if you Google "Contact Us Officer of Governor Wes Moore." So rather than having an email address, they have a contact phone number that's listed, and then they have a form that you'll fill out. And again, I would appreciate you bringing this enhanced awareness to what they're doing, or sorry, what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to initially, and to kind of put in the context of Annapolis, I'm trying to delay this. And then as the Blueprint gets reopened, which we expect in the next couple of years, when the state re-looks at the formula, that then the amount of things that you are all doing here today, and the formula, what I speak of, is the comp ed part of the formula that John referenced earlier, when that is looked at here in a couple of years, which we expect to happen, that this would become a permanent halt to what we would have to do, what the county would have to do. And so would really, you know, because I wanted to step up here because you'll see on the backside, you'll see Senator Reedy, Delegate Boucher, April Rose, all of those individuals, Delegate Tomlinson, they represent Southern Carroll County. I don't, like I said, but I do, I did hear Sandy Mount, I might represent, like, that person, for example, and Senator West. We all have the exact shared opinion that you have, and we have been aggressively working, not just with Republicans. The MSEA and Republicans in Annapolis are like oil and water most of the time, and we have been, you know, butter and bread on this issue. And I can't be more thankful for what they've done to help us, and so I want to acknowledge that as well, because without them, we would be making no headway, and we're really hopeful that we get there. And these three folks have been truly, and, you know, you don't know me, right? Some of you may never even have heard of me before. They have been tireless advocates to make this not happen by getting the AIB to understand Carroll County's issues. And would just really, really appreciate, you took the time to come here, to take the time, even the so valuable time to do that first thing tomorrow. Thank you.
We're going to take your comment, and then what I'm going, or your question, and then what I'd like to do is, in the interest of time, I'm going to ask my staff, my cabinet members who are over here, to come up into this area up front here. And for those of you who still have questions, we will stay here and answer your questions. And that way, we can end the meeting, folks can go. I know that people have other obligations. So go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Willhide. I have two children at Mechanicsville Elementary. I previously started teaching in Carroll County Public Schools. For the first five years, I, like many, many other teachers in this county, left because there was a pay freeze for the first five years of my teaching career. So I now teach in Baltimore County. I have a very unique position. I'm certified in early childhood, elementary, special ed, and deaf and hard of hearing. As an itinerant teacher, I travel around from school to school to support the students who are deaf and hard of hearing in their home schools. I've taught in almost every single school in Carroll County. So whoever said that it's Carroll County, all schools are not created equal, I can say for a fact, they're not all created equal. I've taught in every school in the county, and I bought my house to be able to go to Mechanicsville Elementary, for my students, my children to go to Mechanicsville Elementary. My biggest... My biggest issue is, can we please stop making Blueprint this evil, horrible monster? It's not all of our problems. Is Blueprint perfect? No, absolutely not. But Blueprint at its soul is to support the students in the state of Maryland and increase our test scores and increase our state. Right now, I believe we're fourth in the country for school system. We wanna try and get number one, which is awesome. But everyone here tonight, and everything I have heard from the commissioners and from you, is that Blueprint, Blueprint, Blueprint is this horrible beast. They are trying to support students from low SES families, which, if you go to any educator program, as an educator, you will learn, children who come from lower SES families need more support, period. That's a fact. So I'm not trying to throw them under the bus that they don't need the support. They do. The issue in this county is that the county commissioners have not funded our school system since 2009. It is not a Blueprint problem. It is a systemic problem within Carroll County due to the commissioners. I wanna thank Ed for coming tonight, because he's the only one here. Out of five county commissioners, one had the nerve to show up tonight, which shows us how little the county commissioners care about its constituents. So, this is a snowball problem, that if we went back to 2009 and the county commissioners fully funded our school system, as they should, and as every other county in the state pretty much does, we wouldn't be where we are today. So it is not Blueprint. It is not the state. Is it causing problems? Yes. But the source of the problem is the county commissioners and the lack of funding that they have consistently not given to Carroll County Public Schools.
Thank you for that comment. You know, I would just reiterate, please feel free to contact your county commissioners. Their names, or their information is on the sheet as well, I think, because I know lots of folks were asking about contact information. I wanna thank you for that comment. I also wanna thank everyone again for coming out tonight. We, this is not a good situation. And as I said earlier, we've held it at a time where we don't have all of the final answers, but I hope that each one of you leaves here tonight with more information that you had before you came, and more understanding of why we're in the situation that we're in. So, again, thank you. I hope you have a good, safe drive home. If you have questions, and for those who are still in line, please make your way up here.
One quick thing.
Quick.
The county commissioners are meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM at the Carroll County Government Office to discuss your presenting to them. It is an open session, open to the public, and there is public comment. So please, come tomorrow. I know they make it at an ideal time, 9:00 AM, right? When everyone has to work. Do you think they would have a, a town hall in the evening? No, it's not convenient for them. So, if you are able tomorrow morning, 9:00 AM at the Carroll County Government Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.